Okay. Calling the meeting to order, six thirty-two. We will do a roll of call. Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Citizen member Torres.
Present.
Citizen member Provost.
Present.
And counselor Montigny is excused. And counselor Ross is present. All right. So item number three. Review and discuss the FY twenty twenty-five Bay Path Regional Technical School Assessment in the amount of one million, uh, yeah, one point two, one million, two hundred and ten thousand, hundred and fifty sec, fifty-six, and entertain a motion to submit to town council as presented.
So I'll move.
So again.
All right.
So if I may, this is Kyle, who's superintendent at the Bay Path. Um, and, you know, I'll let him go through his budget, but obviously it's an assessment, so there are no changes that we would make on the town side. So our budget, vote and document reflects, um, the budget as presented, as well as the debt service for the Bay Path. So I'll let him go through the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, so before you have a PowerPoint presentation on the FY twenty twenty-five adopted Bay Path budget for the town of Southbridge. Um, so the first slide shows the funding sources. Chapter seventy and chapter seventy-one estimates are based on the governor's budget submitted January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. The estimated chapter seventy funding for FY twenty twenty-five is fourteen million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. The estimated chapter seventy-one funding for FY twenty twenty-five is one million, three hundred, eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. These are preliminary estimates, subject to change as the House and Senate deliberate on the budget. So the impact on Bay Path on slide three shows the chapter seventy, the minimum contribution and the required net school spending for the proposed FY twenty twenty-five and fiscal year twenty twenty-four. You can see that there's been an increase in chapter seven of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. The minimum contributions have increased five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. And our required net school spending has gone up seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Slide four shows the FY twenty twenty-five total budget for assessment at twenty-nine million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Our member towns' assessments are at the minimum, and our budget includes a debt service assessment of one million, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, and twenty-three dollars. Our operational budget does not require funds above the minimum contributions by our member communities, and our member assessments total twelve million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. Now, although the assessments are at the minimum, it's important to note that the required minimum contributions that each town must contribute have increased collectively by five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Our member towns' transportation assessment has been reduced by six hundred thousand, reflecting the use of our regional transportation reimbursement fund. Slide six, our total chapter seventy revenue is fourteen million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. Our school choice assessment is two hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars, and our chapter seventy-one busing aid is one million, three hundred, eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. We propose using seventy-five thousand from our excess and deficiency to continue funding our OPEB liability, and our use of one hundred thousand from E and D to fund our net school spending application as well. Chapter seventy is really the meat and bone of our FY twenty twenty-five budget. You can see our operational costs, chapter seventy is fourteen million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. We, uh, subtract out the school choice assessment of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Our assessment for minimum contribution is eleven million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. You can see our use of the E and D for OPEB and the net school spending from the previous for our total operational budget of twenty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and fifty-six dollars. Our transportation budget total is two million, sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. You can see from chapter seventy-one aid, we're getting one million, three hundred, eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-four. Our assessment, um, or our transportation reimbursement fund, we're using six hundred thousand, so that leaves a total of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars for assessment to our ten member communities. You can see what makes up the debt service of our principal on the loan is eight hundred and twenty thousand, and our interest is seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, twenty-three dollars. So on that, for total, we're one million, five hundred, fifty-two thousand, and twenty-three dollars. Our buy-in assessment and our sure betment have been zeroed out, so there's no capital there, and our budget for assessment is twenty-nine million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven. Add back in our school choice assessment, and that comes up to twenty-nine million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-two for our total budget proposed of twenty-nine million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven. Some of our budget highlights, what we use the money for, and, uh, all our operational costs of, you know, electric and heat, and our salaries, uh, these are just some of the highlights that we're going to add. We're adding an assistant principal position. We're actually adding two assistant principal positions, but we're changing the title of our dean of students to assistant principal. Uh, this is organizational hierarchy with a school of twelve hundred students to have two assistant principals, kind of fits the mold a little bit better. We're adding a vocational aid, so that we have an aid in our, some of our vocational programming, uh, an intern for our IT department that will be a student from our ISSN program, our Information Support Services and Network Program. Uh, we're really happy to be adding a one-to-one initiative for our student technology devices, and included with that would be our associated software, uh, the devices that we will be using, our Google Chrome device. We looked at both, uh, the Microsoft version, which is probably the cheapest version we can get, was seven hundred and ninety-five. Our Google, we could get for two hundred and ninety-five dollars per device, so every student will get a Google Chrome device when they come in. Uh, we're doing a lease program for that. We currently have three hundred and fifty devices onsite now that we have successfully used for all our testing, MCAS, AP testing, placement testing, and so forth. Those will be dedicated, so we don't have to worry about, did you charge your device? Do you have the charger? Are they working when they come in? So, uh, and the Google, uh, most of our attending town students are coming in from middle schools having used a Google Chrome device, so the upside on that is minimize on that. It includes wage increases in accordance with our collective bargain agreements, and it includes increased cost for transportation. This was the first year in five years we had to go out for transportation bid. We had a three-year, uh, deal and two add-on years, so with no increase, it did go up significantly. Um, but hopefully you realize the use of our, um, transportation reimbursement fund to reduce the assessment to our ten towns. We'll continue to do that as long as we can. And we did realize the eight percent increase in our health insurance premiums. However, we've been really fortunate over the last four years at least to not see anywhere near that kind of increase.
Are you still in the collaborative?
We are.
Sorry.
No. Yep. Uh, the Hampshire Collaborative.
The Hampshire.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Uh, continued use of our SOA funds to provide significant professional development to all our staff, especially programs focused on social-emotional learning, our English learners, and to address chronic absenteeism that COVID seems to have brought on. Use of our SOA funds to provide programs to meet the needs of our most vulnerable groups to close the achievement gap as well. We have, uh, submitted our new three-year SOA to the state, and it was received and approved without any, um, changes or revisions required on that. It also includes professional grounds contract for our fields. Our fields are the original fields, um, we did renovate the building, that's the dead exclusion that our towns are assessing on that. However, the fields were untouched, so the original fields from fifty years ago, uh, they currently see over four times the recommended daily use. Uh, we just had a master plan done by Yale Associates on our fields, so all the programming that we have, they're seeing four times the recommended daily use. They are all natural turf fields, so there's rutting, and, uh, they just don't have time to regenerate and grow. They're being used all year long on that. The preliminary master plan indicates an immediate relief of replacing our game field from turf to a, uh, natural turf to a synthetic turf. That alone would be two point nine million dollars. Um, and to completely address all our needs with additional multipurpose fields, that would be closer to the order of nine million dollars on that. So we're not coming, but I'm putting on the radar that the time is going to come where we're going to have to address the needs, at least for the game field on that, for player safety, and so that we can maintain the programming that we have. It includes textbooks for our vocational programming. You can see some of the programs listed there, advanced manufacturing, animal science, auto tech. Uh, we did combine our business office tech with our marketing, and it's a new, that's beam, that's business, entrepreneurship, and marketing. Program culinary, dental, assisting CAD, health tech, ISSN, metal fab programming, and web dev. It includes shop equipment, uh, new CNC Miller control for cabinet making, uh, surface grinder for cabinet making, CNC router for cabinet making, and a dust collector for cabinet making. A rotating bake oven and a freezer for culinary, and a virtual, virtual welding machines for our metal fab and SimMan. SimMan is a, um, simulated mannequin that is electronic, and you can put it into different states of medical distress, and students have to respond regularly for that. So giving real-life examples without actually having someone have to go into a medical crisis for that. And the virtual welders is a cost savings as well. The virtual welding machines, uh, the generation of the machines now, it used to be they could get, uh, gross motor skills with it. Now they can develop fine motor skills with welding before they actually pick up a dangerous welding torch and go through material. Uh, it's all done electronically, and they can develop those skills, so there's less waste and less opportunity for, um, injury on that, not going to do it. The next slide, slide eleven, shows our freshman seat allocation. This is developed on the capital population of each one of the towns in accordance with the district agreement that we have in place. You can see all ten of our towns, the capital, capital population of each one of those ten towns totals seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven, so South Bridge accounts for two thousand, four hundred and fifty-three, or thirteen point eight-two percent ratio. That is the percentage that we multiply by the three hundred and twenty-five available seats, and that accounts for forty-five seats for South Bridge.
Quick question, is that a static number? Like the designated seat, or does that change each other?
Changes every year based on the capital population. So these are the most current capital populations, and then we do that calculation. It stays usually the same. I have a slide that'll show the, the school-aged children population and how that varies, not capital, you know, but that's school age, and you can see the trends on that for the town of Southbridge.
Great, thank you.
I will say that, and I should have had it, um, our, we currently receive over twice the number of applications that we have seats available. So total, uh, the three hundred and twenty-five seats available, we have just under seven hundred completed applications, and then, and like, on that. Foundation enrollment for Bay Path, this is the total number of students in one of our towns across all four grades at the current time. Um, so we have twelve hundred and forty-three students projected for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. We have twelve hundred and thirty-two students, and, uh, so South Bridge are a decrease of five students overall. So projected for next year is two hundred and three seats with that forty-five number. Um, and this current year, we have two hundred and eight on that. Slide thirteen shows the foundation enrollment, um, for South Bridge, so you can see South Bridge Public Schools as well as Bay Path, both for FY twenty-five and FY twenty-four. So South Bridge Public Schools are an increase of eighty-three students, Bay Paths are a decrease of five South Bridge students. Slide fourteen shows required local contribution. The current year FY twenty-four required contribution of ten million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. The municipal revenue growth factor, which is set by the DOR, is five point five eight percent for the town of South Bridge. FY twenty-five preliminary required contribution is ten million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Um, there's no excess shortfall, so that equates the same amount for FY twenty-five local contribution. You can see the total foundation budget down below. Town of South Bridge is forty-one million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven. Bay Path is four million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and nineteen, for a total of forty-six thousand, forty-six million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Or you can look at it in percentage, and Bay Path equates to nine point one nine percent of the total foundation budget. Slide fifteen, again, shows the FY twenty-five total required contribution of ten million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. This amount is spread among our district towns based upon the foundation budget apportionment. So again, we show the percentage increase, uh, or decrease year over year for the town of South Bridge, as well as Bay Path. It's gone down, uh, negative point eight-five percent. And below that is required contribution. Bay Path is nine hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand, or a decrease of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-six from the year before, uh, on that. So this is slide, um, sixteen, that shows school age, school attending children report. Uh, so we show all ten towns here, and we've seen over, um, the years ever since we've, we've done this, South Bridge has seen a decrease in school-aged children of total two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, our ten towns have seen a decrease of one thousand and seven hundred school-aged children. Um, but the recent, most recent change is minus six school-aged children for the town of South Bridge. That has an impact, as you know, because you get funded by the number of school-aged children on that. And slide seventeen, uh, kind of meat and potatoes, you can see our, all ten towns' minimum contribution, uh, transportation assessment, the debt service, capital improvement, and total assessments for all ten towns. So you can see, I highlighted, South Bridge is nine hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars minimum contribution. And again, that's sixteen point three-three percent of the total minimum contribution. Transportation assessment is twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, and the debt service is two hundred, fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-one for a total, grand total of one million, two hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. And that's just shown independently year over year, so actually you can see that the percent decrease is minus two point seven-nine percent over last year for assessment, or thirty-four thousand, seven, thirty-seven dollars less. And I want to thank you for your continued support. Another highlight that we have, um, this was a hyperlink on there, uh, it just goes to our brand-new website that our C E S designed and programmed a web dev. I encourage you to click on it, it's, uh, it's a fantastic, uh, webpage they put together, and there's a brief video, less than a minute on the front, that shows what Bay Path is all about. And there's many clicks for the, uh, community, as well as all the programming we're doing. And we have social media on Facebook, Twitter, TikTok, um, so I encourage you to check that out for all the happenings up at the school. And, uh, we just finished our last meeting of our strategic plan. We had several meetings, we had over fifty stakeholders, parents, teachers, students, business industry, school committee members and administrators, and that'll map our roadmap for success over the next three years. We hope to compile all that input into one voice and have it approved at the school committee meeting in June on that. So a lot of great things are happening up on the hill. I encourage you to check it out.
Good, thank you. Any questions from the committee?
Just once, I think, I think Bay Path's an awesome, awesome, awesome school. My son's graduating this year, he's going to be a plumber.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I had a quick question, and then I'll go out to the, I don't know if anyone out here has any questions. Um, so I wanted to go back to slide number nine.
Sure.
Um, on the student opportunity at friends to provide PD.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just, just a question on some of the programs. Um, what is, what is the S E R program that you're you currently using?
Right. Bridging Resilient Youth Transitions, B R Y T. So we started that last year, it's fully staffed with a school adjustment counselor and a, uh, B C B A.
And that's for the whole school?
The whole school.
Um, and then I noticed, um, you listed, we got this in, in our book on the grants, and you, um, mentioned a grant for chronic absenteeism. Can you give us a little overview of sort of like, um, what that initiative entails?
Sure, so I think it was around, I don't have that in front of me, around ten thousand dollars. Um, so there are several school communities across the state that were able to go into that, so there's a, um, cohort of schools that can talk about what's working for them, what they're trying, so that's part of it, meeting together with all the schools that are doing that. What we did specifically is, over February break and April break, we held a CARE program. It's, uh, the acronym. The A is absenteeism. Um, so we had teachers from each core academic, math, English, uh, history and science present, and any student who was having difficulty in their trades, we had work. Uh, the students came in, and they were able to work on those assignments to increase their grades in those classes that they were struggling in, and received, um, support from the teachers there. And it was also those who had, uh, attendance issues. It, by showing up, they bought back attendance, so I think over forty days were recovered, and don't hold me to that. But I have, I just put the numbers in, in school community report the other night. Um, but several, several, um, days were recovered through that program. So those students are now on target to, you know, receive credit for the next year, or, and/or graduate for our seniors.
Do you break down attendance data, um, by town, or is it just by unit?
We could, we, we absolutely could, so it's all there, and, um, so, you know, we could absolutely get that.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see that data. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from the audience? Counselor McCady?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, for your, uh, the, uh, debt service, principal eight hundred and twenty thousand, interest seven hundred and thirty-two thousand. Uh, it seems a little high to me. Is there any way that you can reduce that, change it? Pay a little bit more towards the principal to bring that down? It seems like that's project, because I'm going, I'm going to call it out, it's been far a while ago. In my own experience, from paying off my house, the interest always came down every year, after year, after year, it went down. This still seems a little high.
So the, uh, let me just stick to that. So the interest is lower than the principal, so that'll be a continuing trend that the interest keeps going down, uh, on that. So I think we have twenty-something years left. I can look into seeing, you know, uh, early payoffs and stuff like that, uh, in my business and, uh, we can look at that.
Um, another question is, it seems to me that they trend in manufacturing, they're towards more robotics. Is what bringing robotic classes have impacted?
Regular electronics, that's the closest. The students will learn robotics, um, encoding and, uh, they learn the software coding and programming web dev, so they do that. We have a robotics club that competes every year. We're changing that out, so this year we didn't compete, but they, uh, they traveled out to Ohio. They, the advisors from program web dev, advanced manufacturing, and electronics, went to Ohio to check out a new robotics program and see if we can compete at that level there. They have been competing, I forget the name of it, but it was, uh, the national championships were out in, uh, San Francisco, California, so this would be a little bit closer and more high school level. We were competing at the college and professional level. Doing well, but, you know, change that.
I was thinking more on teaching, classes on deep use of robotics, building robotics, manufacturing, machines, the A machine and all that, all going towards, uh, robotic, um, manufacturing. So I was hoping we hear a little about classes and building robots, and not so much the competition side of it.
Uh, advanced manufacturing, they're all CNC, computer numeric control, so they're learning that, so even the old bridge port there, uh, add-ons to those to make them, you know, CNC controlled. We have the house machine, the three-axis house machine, that's all CNC controlled on that, so the students are learning all of that and that.
Okay. And then finally, uh, accident at Ruppland, it seems very, very far away. Is that, how long have they been in this, um, district? It just seems like they would be closer to maybe Blackstone, uh, technical school.
Probably Monty Tech. Monty Tech would be, uh, the one, the only other home out there. Uh, they've been, I've been here four years, uh, the last time they opened it up, I don't remember how long ago, but several years they've been in. They chose to join. It was opened up, and they chose to join it, uh, and, you know, some, some chose not to join, so it's closer towns on that.
You mean, allow more software students, but then, of course, it might be more at cost to the town if we had more students.
Your school system would use more funding and more students on that. So this is balance, increasing enrollment, and here, South Bridge runs through deficits and enrollment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor?
Ruppland's probably been an assistant for twenty years and more. I drove the Ruppland bus for the kids.
How did, how did they?
Seventy-three from Bay Path.
Okay.
Uh, you talk about attendance and spending extra money for attendance. I have a hard time with that, to be honest, as, as a resident of the community, tax payer, as a council. Uh, in, in Bay Path, they're teaching people to go to their world out there, work, and with, uh, the chronic absenteeism, somebody just doesn't want to be there. And, uh, allowing them to do the easy way to get the attendance up, I, I, I think you're failing the system, you're failing the person, because that particular person, if he doesn't want to be there, then we shouldn't educate him. You know, I, I ask my firm belief, because it's same with the chronic discipline, uh, problem, child that's there, uh, disrupting the classes and those kind of things, that affects the education of the person that wants to be there. Is there some point in time where you say enough is enough, and, and you, you don't give the kid, you know, an easy way, uh, of gaining the attendance back or rewarding him? Uh, you, you do one week, but that student could be out of school thirty days, and you give him credit. Is, is there a point in time where you don't spend that kind of money, and you just have to wash your hands of them?
So every student has a right to an education.
Correct, I understand.
We don't have that. We work with them, and we try to identify the root cause, and that's why the grant funding is provided to help us identify, why aren't they there? Why don't they want to be there? Is it engagement, is it medical, is it, you know, a lot of different reasons why our students, COVID brought upon, you know, uh, different thought process on it, that, you know, different things are important. So we've seen an increase of that, and we haven't seen it gone down since our return to school. I'll be honest, our attendance isn't as bad as some of our peers, um, but there was an opportunity to receive some grant funding, so we applied for it, and, uh, we're looking at different ways that we can increase that. We do, we, college students are, uh, college and career ready, and part of that is, you have to show up to maintain your job and keep your job, so employability, employability skills, attendance is part of that, so we work on it. But there's a lot of different reasons that students are out, uh, and that's part of the, you know, our bright program and the social-emotional needs, why don't they want to be there? We're looking at all different ways, uh, we just had a lengthy conversation in a subcommittee meeting last night to, uh, allow hats. We found that, you know, if it's a difference of a student being able to put a hat on and show up, a hat doesn't impact instructional time, so why don't we allow that? There's one way to get a student to show up, and there's a lot of different reasons. Could be medical, alopecia, could be going through some treatments where they lose air. It could be just that, uh, the economic status, and they, you know, they don't have hot water, and they haven't washed their hair. So if we can have a student show up by that and wear a baseball hat, it's not a big thing. Uh, but there is the conversation, healthy dialogue, that we're eroding, you know, uh, manners and this and that, but, uh, you know, as long as it doesn't impede the instructional, we're happy to have them there, and we're happy to have them. A lot of the businesses, uh, the two candidates running for president wear hats now when they speak, baseball hats. Um, and a lot of the workplaces allow baseball hats in it, so, and a lot of our sending schools allow baseball hats, so we, we took that, that was some feedback we had directly from students, that it is a difference. If I have a bad hair day and I can throw a hat on, I'll show up. If not, then they're looking to avoid school. So there's, it's a complicated, um, but we're never done when the student will continue right to the very end and try to get them to show up and do the work. It's not as easy as show up for a couple of days in February break, and you'll buy back ten absences, it's more of a one-to-one buyback on those attendance. So it's not an easy way out. While they're there, it's just not seat time, they're working on list assignments and projects, so there's a makeup work on that.
I, I fully understand that every child needs and has the right to be educated, but I just have a hard time with what goes on. But I just have a hard time with what goes on in some of the schools. It'll take us out, for instance, you've got the high school that's constantly being destroyed in the bathroom. Sings ripped off the wall, toilet smashed, graffiti, graffiti being done. I have a problem with constantly helping the same person to, that is doing this behavior where at some point in time it needs to stop. You know, if they don't want to be there to get educated and the student that wants to be there to get educated is being affected by it, I think something different has to happen. And maybe that's on the state level, not on the O level, but that's all I'm saying. But I fully understand that every student has a right to be educated.
And I, I'll say this, I don't believe any student wakes up and says, I want to be disruptive today. That behavior is manifesting something that's wrong with that student. They just don't have the tools to express what they're missing or what they need. So it's our job to try to get to that so that they become a better student, a better citizen and a better worker on that. So we'll never stop trying to identify what that behavior is and what's causing, what trauma is causing that behavior and how, how can we reach that student to make them, you know, a better student, which translates into, you know, a better citizen and a better community where you can get a job and a livable wage and buy a house here and support all the, all the businesses there. It is a tough balance. It is a tough balance and it's not always easy to find that. And there's out placements and a lot of different, you know, support. There's no place to do that.
Thank you.
I'm a toy citizen. I have a question on page ten about the professional ground contract field. Are you talking about landscaping or are you talking more about treatment?
So we did, bringing in a landscaper to slice seed and treat so that, and their recommendation is that, you know, no matter what we do, you know, we're going to reduce the, the usage. It just doesn't have the time to regenerate. But they're also leveling some of the ruts. You would think on the top of the hill, we, we drain, but we don't drain. There's a lot of clay up there and it holds it, so.
So does Bayback top dress at the end of the year or in the spring?
We are now. So we are now.
You are now.
At the end of the year. That's what, we have the landscaper coming in to do. I hope so with building property maintenance. We hired a new building property maintenance teacher who came from golf course superintendent. So he's got the knowledge now, so work with them to get it. And then our students will be out there with the equipment and top dress and maintain the fields and do all that. So they do the lining and they do some of the mowing and that, but more hands-on on that. So the next couple of years, we are contracting with a landscaper to do the top dressing and fill in some of the holes and aerate it. But eventually our students will take that over. And that, that's cost savings. Like I said, our new website would have been over four, a couple hundred thousand to do that. Our students stay in-house and they get an absolutely professional job on it. So there's a cost savings, so whenever we can use that.
Can you have an estimate of going synthetic turf first from anywhere between nine and ten million?
The one field, the only field they recommend a synthetic turf is that greenfield, that football field. That, that would be two point nine million dollars if we did that alone. That would reduce a lot of use on other fields because it can take a lot of use.
Would that include a track around it?
It would. We, we looked, current track is not regulation, but when it went in, they would put a regulation track around it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Dan?
Thank you, welcome. What's the balance in your access and efficiency account?
We are at a cap.
At a cap?
We're at cap five percent. So it's five percent of last year's operating budget.
Oh, you've got a question?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in the audience?
I just want to say I thank you so much for, I love, I appreciate your response to Counselor Shenier around the trauma-informed approach and FCL practices that are really important, especially after our students have gone through a pandemic. And, and a lot of students have a lot of different issues as to, you know, why they are behaving that way or why they, they're not attending school. And really, really important for us to really think about that and, you know, think about child development, even though some, some students in high school are bigger than all of us physically, but that mentally, you know, they're, you know, that frontal lobe is not developed until they're twenty-five. And so really keeping that in mind that they are adolescents. So I appreciate that. I had another quick question about on page ten around, you mentioned the strategic plan and businesses being involved. I was curious about what businesses in South Bridge are kind of involved in, in that process and whether there are internships that are, you know, that students participate with businesses in our community.
So, yes, there's a lot. So I can't begin to decide in fear of, of missing. We have partnerships. So we have twenty-two technical programs. All twenty-two have a program advisory committee. And that program advisory committee is made up of business, industry, a parent, a student, higher education in that field, as well as any labor union in that field. So it's going to vary who sits on that panel. They come together twice a year and we have one general advisor where they all come together. They look at our curriculum and they look at our equipment and they look at our program and they keep us current. We're only as good, many of our vocational teachers, well, all of them come from industry. They're only as good as the last time they were in that field. The ISSN teacher we had five years ago, things have changed drastically on that. So this keeps us current. They say, oh, this is great to do, that's good to know, move towards here. This is the latest and greatest. They help us identify grants to keep current with it. And they look at our five-year plan for each one of the programs that, you know, you need to upgrade this in the next five years, these are your needs on that. They also identify co-ops for our students. A student is eligible for co-op as early as the second half of their junior year. That's when they, the earliest a student can have proficiency in the majority of the competencies for that trade. So rather than come to school, they go to work every other week. And they, they show up and they earn a wage. And we have students earning as high as twenty-two dollars an hour and others are earning, the minimum is bottom on that. So they'll go out throughout all our ten towns and those that aren't included. So any business that wants to take a chance on one of our students, I look at it as, you know, you have them, you can test drive them as an employee. If it works out, great. If it doesn't work out. Many of our students on co-op get offers of full-time jobs upon graduation. My nephew goes there, he's got a full offer from a manufacturing company, Kinefac, with a 401K and they will reimburse college cost for him if he wants to go to college on that. So he can learn and earn at the same time. So there's a lot of opportunity for, for each one of our programs. And each year we look to increase that and provide that opportunity for as many students who want it. The numbers are, we have a couple hundred students who are out on co-op. We can model it and many of it is real world. As real world is our restaurant that's open to the public four days a week. However, they're still in that comfort sphere of my instructors and all my colleagues around us. To take them out and put them in a business and they're truly on their own develops the skills that we just can't develop in the building. So it's, it's a great opportunity for all our students. And there's, there's a number of South Bridge companies and businesses and industries that both support our program advisory, second chance animals, you know, services. We have a part, our classroom is the bottom floor of that building there. And a hundred percent of our students graduating are going on to higher education in the animal world, vet assisting is, they're all nationally certified vet assistants. They're receiving their pins tonight and they have a pinning ceremony. Our first, this is our first graduating class from there. And that wouldn't be possible without a local business right here in South Bridge supporting that. And to say that we should be feeding, a lot of them are out working in animal hospitals or shelters or LBF, the pharmaceutical, and they're going to go to school as well. So it's, it's a little deceiving when our numbers come out that the number of students go on to higher ed because they have to check one. A successful vocational is, they're going into the military, they're working in their field or they're going to school. And many that are going to school, check that box, but they are going to school because they have the funding through the co-op and they're now part-time or full-time job that they have as well.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Any further questions?
Actually, sorry, I'm actually on the advisory committee for Bayback and the private department. And my son is also on co-op with my clothing company.
Wonderful, that's awesome. Thank you, thank you for sharing that. All right, great.
I just have a comment.
Sure.
Your animal science facility is, is really nice, by the way, and the, and the teacher as well is really, really nice as well. But I have to say, I did get to witness your robotic projects that you guys put in competitions and I was very impressed by that.
They do a good job.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, it's really awesome. Just a comment.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'll let them know.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, I will take a vote, all who's in favor. You want to post extensions unanimous?
Thank you. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we'll switch gears. Thank you. Here's to item number four. Review and discuss the FY twenty twenty-five South Bridge School Department budget in the amount of thirty-seven million, three hundred and two thousand, five hundred and eighteen. And entertain a motion to submit to town council as presented. I have it.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? We appreciate being here. I do want to be transparent, I'm a hard stop at eight, but I think we have a lot of time. So we prepared just a quick review. I know many of you had attended the public hearing, not all. But we did have extensive information and back and forth there. We can also provide a copy of that report if they're interested. So just let us know. But I just wanted to begin with the obvious highlights, right? Appropriation, we are a net school spending levels here in South Bridge at this point. So this is the appropriation that we believe Desi has put out as what is the required spending. And we'll go into detail a little bit about how that's constructed for you. And I did want to draw attention to what I had raised at the public hearing. We're putting out a capital request, six hundred thousand dollars. These are monies to put aside for roofing windows, boilers and to support potential new construction. Again, I'll get into more detail about that. That's not necessarily to say those monies would be spent in the next year, but it's more about earmarking and being prepared. What's driving our budget in some ways, and you've probably seen the news with our friends in Worcester, I think they're cutting forty-five positions out of their budget at this point. The end of federal COVID nineteen funds is definitely going to begin to impact school districts and municipalities across the nation. Our budget, we actually made about a million dollars in reductions before hitting the level of net school spending this year. So we're not exactly level services year over year. Most of those changes are really around positions we anticipate having a vacancy or an elimination of and not causing people to lose their position. For us, recruitment has been an ongoing issue, so we're trying to retain talent wherever possible. We did make a trim to our technical assistance line as well to help balance that account. Mr. Racine, of course, is our local expert on chapter seventy. So I'm going to ask him to just walk you quickly through that and then we'll get to our questions portion.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. And I apologize for, if there's any bit of a broken record from other prior presentations talking about the Student Opportunity Act in chapter seventy, as well as the presentation you just heard. But first, on slide five, it all really comes down to enrollment. What is the enrollment of the South Bridge Public Schools? This past year, the South Bridge Public Schools experienced a four percent increase in enrollment after years of decline and in the last few years have been relatively steady. Chapter, slide six is meant to give a very high-level overview of how does chapter seventy work to fund schools? The state in essence establishes a floor. It does not establish a ceiling, it does not establish recommended, it just says at a minimum, how much should you spend? They determine this by taking your enrollment, which we saw before, and multiplying it by a number of per people rates and they recalculate this every year. From that establishes the foundation budget. From there, they then support communities based on how to pay for that floor. And so which is in the form of, major form is state aid through chapter seventy. For wealthier communities, they receive very little state aid. For less wealthy communities, they receive more chapter seventy state aid. So that's just at a very high level how it's working. Slide seven shows the, the examples of rates that are used, not the actual per people, but what do they fund? On the left-hand side, every student gets a base foundation rate based on the grade level that they're in. And then there's additional amounts provided if it's special education, English learners, low income. Slide eight shows examples of the Student Opportunity Act, which is the biggest change to education funding since the nineteen ninety-three Education Reform Act that established this methodology. A number of years ago, or several years ago, they decided to change this rate and increase this substantially for students with greater needs or English learners, students with disabilities and low income. So what you see here are examples of rates, both showing every year the rates go up by inflation. The blue shows how much on a percentage basis they're going up because of the Student Opportunity Act. This leads to pretty substantial increases over the last few years. And FY twenty-five is your four of the six-year phases. Slide nine shows how much South Bridge receives to help support this. South Bridge is quite fortunate where seventy-seven percent is actually funded through chapter seventy. And you could see that here. The state aid is in blue and the yellow is the local contribution. In three years, South Bridge is receiving almost ten million more in chapter seventy. Pretty substantial to help support education. Slide ten, and so this is where it gets a little confusing. How do we go from a foundation budget to what is the required minimum amount to spend for the South Bridge Public Schools? There are certain things that are included in the foundation budget and there are certain things that are not included in the foundation budget. So whenever you see the word foundation budget, that doesn't equal what is the appropriation for the South Bridge Public Schools. You first have to add some things back and take some things out. So the cost for charter, charter schools, tuition assessments are included in the foundation budget. So those can come off as well as school choice, tuition assessments, state special education assessments and municipal-related costs in support of the South Bridge Public Schools. What's not included in the foundation budget they need to add back is transportation and any maintenance cost in excess of a hundred thousand dollars per project. Slide eleven shows that formula going from the foundation budget of just shy of forty-two million. And we back out a few things that count towards that, charter tuition, school choice, municipal-related costs. And then we add back a few additional costs. Charter tuition reimbursement, this is aid to support charter tuition and transportation, which totals thirty-seven point three million. This thirty-seven point three million is the minimum to appropriation for the South Bridge Public Schools based on this formula, and that is what we're requesting, just the minimum, which increases by three point two million from the prior year. A substantial portion of this amount of three point two million dollar increase is actually all through state aid. South, the town of South Bridge is receiving two point eight million dollars in net education aid, which is really fantastic to support that. And only four hundred twenty-eight thousand is needed to help meet that three point two million.
Yes, pleasure. And again, the capital request. So you might recall going back a couple budget cycles now, the town council did allocate three hundred thousand dollars to support the hiring of a firm to do a master facilities plan. That firm has been busy at work. I'm actually scheduled to meet with them, I believe it's next week, to hear where they are in their report. They are looking at our buildings from very extensive, the entire shell, all the building codes, all the engineering structures, HVAC, electric, the whole nine yards. And of course, we'll be costing out options for the town how to address the current situation. In a nutshell, ERS, Charleston Street School, West Street School, Polat Facilities are all in need of extensive repair. And so their plan will be to work with the town council once we have some options and we can lay out potential solutions to those buildings. Because any type of major construction is going to require reallocation of classrooms, and that's a problem. Where would you put the kids? So we'll have to have potential scenarios that the town can talk about. There are options on numbers of school facilities that may be maintained. It could be discussion of eliminating the use of certain buildings and facilities. All those decisions ultimately are town council decisions. Obviously, myself, school committee members would be input on like the educational program. So there's the needs assessment in schools. But then ultimately, investment in buildings, buildings are owned by the town. We control them as long as they're educational facilities, where the town ultimately has to finance buildings. So a lot of work still needs to be done on that. A lot of information needs to be presented and shared while all that happens. Even in the best of times, there was a decision to build a new school. That's a years out. And the problem that we find ourselves with is those four facilities I mentioned at any given moment could have catastrophic systems failures. And in fact, they have in the last few years. We've had a hundred thousand dollar asbestos issue at Polat. We've had a large section of the roof at West Street literally flap over, blow off. Charlton Street School had a failure of a section of roof this past year that's under repair as we speak. Would masonry even be replaced? It'll be very complicated, not just the roof material. HVAC systems, electric systems, fire systems, they're all old. So the request is to kind of multi-stage this in a sense. We make a capital allocation for these major systems in our schools. So therefore, if there is a need, we don't have to pull together and have a special need event. The money is there. You follow purchasing procedures and we can address it, much like what we're currently doing at Charlton Street School. So that project is moving along quickly. If the accounts aren't used, the money could then be used later on towards an MSBA building program. The Massachusetts School Building Administration, Administration, Authority.
Authority.
Authority, thank you. You know, has programming that would help Southbridge address these issues, either in a large-scale full building or in large-scale like doors, windows, roofs type of system at a building. But large projects with large percentages, like seventy-five percent roughly, state aid. So that therefore, the town's not spending nearly as much. Now, think about it, right now, I replace a door, we're paying a hundred percent of the door cost. If you were part of a large project, you'd be paying twenty-five percent for that door. So we would like to wrap as much as possible into a building project. If you need to do it in a way that you're investing in a building that you know you're going to use for at least twenty-five years. So there's a whole bunch of steps required. But that's the thinking behind the capital request. Unfortunately, I'm pretty certain that we will have some kind of need to repair our facilities in the next few years. If we don't, we can only use these funds where they're authorized for, so they will remain on the town's side. That's the thinking around that. So yeah, we ran through the high level because we had gone into a lot of detail at our public hearing. But happy to give you an opportunity to ask some questions and also point out you do have a budget book. In budget book, there are tables on the staffing allocations at different buildings, and there's also a breakdown. Line item for expenses, I think that'll also be helpful.
Questions? Maybe? While they're waiting, I have a question. Now, in the architectural inspection for the capital request, is the town building inspector involved in that review in any way or in the town?
Well, this is engineers, architects, the firm brings in a whole bunch of people. So part of that is a code review, and so they do inspect our buildings for code compliance annually. But you can be in compliance with code, but the code, and you're a plumber, I believe.
You still have.
You already know what I'm talking about. The code could be thirty years old in a particular building and you're okay. But as soon as you do major construction, like a school, we can't just fix one piece. It starts to tick off code requirements. So that's why we hired this large firm. They understand the complexity of all that, so they can cost that all out. So I'm sure there's been some interaction, but this is a whole-scale, large review, so they're going to dig into all the layers.
Yeah, I was just curious how involved a building inspector.
I'm sure if there's a building project, they also will be involved.
Outside of the normal fire, building inspected, normal certificate blocking fees that we do, they'll be part of that inspection.
Any other questions out here? Councilor Shannon?
You mentioned the conditions of the buildings. They're not in very good condition from my take of it. Why would you cut a million dollars out of maintenance?
Well, again, the, first of all, I didn't cut out my maintenance. Maintenance budget is a reference, a budget term, so it's a reference to taking your existing program, everything you have. If you were to maintain it and roll it forward with increasing costs, like you know, average inflation of four percent. That's a maintenance budget. Where you haven't changed it. So I apologize if you misunderstood the term. It wasn't clear enough. But it's not our maintenance facilities and our maintenance employees. It's maintaining the existing footprint of everything that we have. It's a way to slightly reduce our footprint to stay under net school spending.
Well, the paper you provided shows a one million dollar reduction in maintenance budget.
In the maintenance budget, correct.
Nine positions being eliminated.
Those aren't maintenance positions. You're misunderstanding me there.
Okay.
In budget terms, when we refer to a maintenance budget, you need to have your.
Another phrase for this could be level service.
Thank you.
So if we just said, what are we providing this year? If we, it's going to cost more next year because of cost of marketing increases, benefit costs, utility costs go up. Just if we were to provide this service next year, how much will it increase? And unfortunately, we couldn't afford that under the net school spending minimum funded. We had to cut a million dollars from a level service budget. You refer to it as maintenance. I apologize for the confusion about that. You probably should have said something like level service or something like that. But it's nothing to deal with facilities and maintenance as it stands within the department. Sorry.
Any other questions from the audience? Councilor Daniel?
Hi. We're talking almost a ten percent increase because of the Student Opportunity Act this year, and this is the fourth year of six. Is it going to be the same thing again next year and the year after? Are we talking the same thing or? I realize you're guessing a little bit because there's some inflationary aspect to the algorithm.
And enrollment.
And enrollment. So is that the concrete part of calculating for the following two years is enrollment? Or is there a set number that the state is to be, that needs to be increased by?
Great question. So enrollment is a huge factor. So if we have more students, the costs will be increasing. And the enrollment for the Southbridge Public Schools did increase. That was part of the driver, but not a huge amount. If enrollment declined, it wouldn't be a problem. The other part is the rates that are increasing. I would say it's fair to assume somewhere between four to six percent because of the Student Opportunity Act. No, but then on top of that, so you've got enrollment, and this year one up. You've got roughly a four to six percent increase on average, somewhere in there. And then you have inflation on top of it. This year it was lower. The past few years were very high, to the point where the state did cap it. But I mean, the increase this year is probably saying it's a good estimate for two more years out. And then after that, it will mainly be driven just by inflation. So and on average, outside of these last few years, the average inflation increase has been about two percent.
So you've got two years of three bites.
I think Stephanie, did you have a question?
Yes. And looking at mine, I'd, one, two, three, nine hundred for salary principal high school. Why has the amount increased from FY twenty-four in one year from five hundred thousand to one hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven?
I'm sorry, what page are you?
Twenty-four. Mine, I'd one, two, three, nine hundred, or rather, five, ten, three hundred, salary principal high school. FY twenty-four shows the amount at five hundred thousand. FY twenty-five shows the amount at eight hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven.
So this includes, this budget table is just a general fund budget. It is the operating budget. It does not include grants. As I was mentioning before, there are a number of positions on ESAR and other funding sources. So this increase is due to those positions that used to be funded by grants are going into that. And this line item includes administration and administrative support for the high school. It is not an individual on. It is many positions in that.
Can that then be broken down into sublines if that's the case?
This is the account structure that we've used for, right, if, it's not, there's not, the financial system is not broken up by individual positions. It's sort of summarized.
Could already be added then to that line item to include what you just said? A slash and administration?
We can look to relabel some of these positions if that's helpful, relabel some of the accounting items if that's helpful.
Is that true for previous years as well? Those are, they include also administration?
Yeah, this is sort of the administrator line item. It's not about individual, but about administrators. Just as the line below it is on individual teacher, it's instructional support positions. And there's a whole bunch of positions within that. It's meant to say that for.
It's a little misleading the way it's stated.
It's fair, I understand.
If you look at all funds position table, if you're interested in the number of people that are in that line, each school, the breakdown, the administration, there's no hiding the number of administrators that are in our schools. There's a principal. There's an associate principal out of the high school. A number of APs, we have DPs, all necessary, all necessary, and we're at net minimum school spending. In other words, we can't spend any less than we are, and we need those positions. And I've been very clear for six years about the need for those positions. Middle school's positions are also much larger than they have been historically. But again, they're tied to improved performance at the school. So there's no attempt to hiding it. I talk about it all the time in public. This is just a matter of printout, and we're very clear about the number of positions.
It's not so much as hiding. It's first glance, someone would take this to mean a high school principal's salary has increased by almost double. So if you could add in the wording administration, that would be more helpful to know that it includes more than just a high school principal's salary.
Well, thank you, and that's why we come and answer questions.
Thank you.
So I think that would be similar because this is the way MUNIS is set up. So if you were to look at our town budget, so if you were to just look at the face sheet of our town budget and the line item for salary wages personnel, town manager, our line item says two hundred and seventy-four thousand, six twenty-seven. I don't make two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. It's all the other admins that are within the town manager's office. So that's the way it's set up through the MUNIS system and way the school reports to MUNIS.
And you understand that, and you.
No, I know. I'm just trying to say that.
Because you work in the budget and you create the budget. But someone coming in from the outside looking at this wouldn't understand that, and they would take it to mean that it was just one salary.
Right. No, it's understood. I'm just trying to say that's kind of how MUNIS is set up. I know on the town side, we're talking about changing, not out of MUNIS, but to a better-defined chart of accounts to break things down.
I did budget work back in two thousand, back to two thousand twelve. But I don't remember when we were going over the line items back then, that it was categorized solely based on one item. I think it was a little bit differently that way.
Yeah, I do think it can be, I do think it can be confusing to, you know, to a resident just looking at this.
Budgeting is very complicated anyway. You could do lines, objects, codes.
Questions? Councilor McKenney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. So first of all, I've been on the council for five years. And when you put in a capital request, if you're not planning on using that capital money the year that you're putting it in for, and we don't usually approve capital requests. The capital is on the line, but it's the year that you're going to use it, that's when we were going to use it. I'm not sure that we would be willing to give you six hundred thousand dollars if you don't plan to use for a couple of years. I'm just not sure how the council would feel about that. I don't think I would be in favor of it unless you're planning on building it next year. Then we would have to wait till the year you're planning on doing it or work. That's how it's always worked since I've been on the council, and we'll see what the council wants to do this year.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And for clarity, what we're saying on that first line, three hundred thousand doors, windows, et cetera, is we have, for the last few years, had a bucket of money for those repairs in the event that they did fail. And the point being is if they don't fail, we suggest that they could also, then the council could decide, hey, we have money set aside that can help for the costs associated with the school building. I don't disagree with what you laid out.
And then on the, on the budget, the net school spending is forty-one, almost forty-two million. And then you've taken out charter tuition, assessment, school choice, tuition, state standard education. Those are because less students are enrolled in that, or what's the reason for reducing that?
Very good question. Those are eligible costs that count towards this stuff. So let's, we want to sort of give all the credit and just take only the bare minimum. So it's just sort of taking that money off of the total that needs to be spent.
And minutes more related costs, what does that mean?
These are for administrative costs that the town hall provides to, in behalf of supporting the Southbridge Public Schools, paying bills, payroll. The formula for net school spending acknowledges that, to say those are costs in support of the Southbridge Public Schools, so they should be deducted from it.
So if it's still being paid, but just not in our budget. Then you're adding back in charter tuition and transportation. So we end up with thirty-seven million, three oh two. That's what's in our budget that we would be voting on. Then we get chapter seventy, thirty-two million, charter tuition reimbursement for women education, depending on subtracting, again, the subtracting special education choice, charter tuition. So we have twenty-eight million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, but what we're voting on is thirty-seven million.
Correct.
So could you explain that a little bit, not in a term of payment terms? Why is it different, thirty-seven million and twenty-eight and so on?
Because the state doesn't give funding for all. They don't provide a hundred percent of funding to any community in the Commonwealth. Even the poorest community, I believe, right now is either Lawrence or Holyoke, they provide ninety-five percent of the cost. But they don't provide all of it, and they don't provide anything for transportation. So we wanted to at least acknowledge that there is a lot of it that is coming to support So, we wanted to at least acknowledge that there is a lot of it that is coming to support the South River Folk Schools through that, so we wanted to acknowledge that in the presentation.
So, the bottom line is, the final self of the 428,142, the rest will all come from the state?
Correct. In addition?
It's new, the 400,000 has been new on top of what's on top of the year historical, you're around 97, right, 97,000 roughly? It was in the...
Sure. You have to add in what we pay for insurance, health insurance, contributions. Add that up.
When's the funding going away, COVID, all kinds of funding? Do you anticipate the school, after-school use of facilities, schools for the gymnasium and the auditorium, the dress field, you find that you're gonna see less use to the public, general public, for all the facilities because of the cuts?
No, the funding that we're losing will not impact our Apple program, will not impact our sports program, so I don't anticipate any change.
How about for the general public, not the school program, but for the, like, say I wanted to rent an auditorium one day or use dress field?
Same procedures?
Same procedures.
Yeah, okay.
Could you imagine? I'd just like to acknowledge, I think the good thing here is that Dr. Valar and his team had recognized the reductions in the ESAR and prepared for that, as opposed to what we're seeing in some school districts that did not prepare for that, didn't have a plan in action, so we're very fortunate that we're not here asking for a bigger town contribution by the efforts to reduce that impact to the community. And working with us to that, you know, that net school spending to make sure that we balance not only the town function and be able to operate the town, all the things that we're able to do on the town side through the budget process to increase some of the staffing on our end to balance it with the schools, that should be recognized on that, that there was a plan in action over the couple of years. I know Dr. Valar and I meet all the time, and we've talked about over the years, about what the plan was as these funds start to decline, so it has not such a huge impact on the community. Because, you know, especially school districts that rely so heavily on that state and local federal aid, if you don't plan for it, that's where you really get off the fiscal cliff. So, it's been planned out throughout the period of time, so I do appreciate that, that we're able to work in partnership when it comes to the budget to say, hey, there's a balance act on town and school side.
Thank you, Jim.
Chairman, do we thought the governor, the governor's budget has, is suggesting an increase in, I think, chapter 70, is it, in school funding? Is this in here as anticipated?
Correct. This reflects the governor's budget.
Right. All, if I may, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump. All our revenue projections have been based on the governor's proposal, and that's normally how, we've done it over a number of years, even when I was on council side, we always take the governor's budget, because that tends to be the most realistic funding, so you'll have the house that will change some things, and I think the senate just came out today with some increases in chapter 70, but decreases in this. So, until they go to conference to balance it all out, we won't know those true numbers, but once we do, then we'll make any adjustments, everything.
So, if there's an increase, should we give it to the school? If there's a decrease, would we take it away?
We, we're hoping that our budget comes in within the house. Any additional chapter 70, that's when we negotiate with the school district, I believe that's how it's been done in the past, to say if we, say, for instance, rather than take from a capital plan, you say we'll allow the school to keep $300,000 of chapter 70, I think that's how it was done a couple of years ago, was, you know, we will use 300,000 out of that extra, or the additional chapter 70 monies, because the town is all of them right, because as long as we meet that net school spending, we're within our right to say, hey, we're not gonna give you all the chapter 70 money, and that's been a long-time dialogue that I remember over the years. So, we try to work good faith with the school district and the town to say, how can we do some things to address? And that's where you might have an opportunity to address some capital things, a roof replacement or something, and I think that's, I believe that's how you did the 300,000 last year, was the chapter 70 money, the additional chapter 70 money that came in, and then to the master plan, it was not town funds, it was through the chapter 70 to allow that, you know, the town could have taken that chapter 70 money and used it for our budget, but it was to the school. Correct?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I gotta add to this, Mike. Historically, the line item for capital does not open up till November. Trying to perform a roof task anytime between November and March or April is difficult. Now you have school getting out, you become, you, and with summer school, the summer programs, you are limited to when you can perform a major project. So, saying that we can't get, use our capital funds in a timely manner, we're really limited. I know Jack's been working hard to try and bring that date back to somewhere closer to July, but historically, it's been September or November when the line item opens, which limits our use of the funds.
Right.
We're doing the capital right now, aren't we?
Well, we're working on the capital right, so we now have the free cash certifying depending on, there was an allocation last year for 300,000, I believe, for emergency?
In November.
And, uh-huh?
November is going to be up the line item.
Right. But looking through the MUNIS, I don't think any of that 300 has been spent unless anything has not passed.
We're in the process.
Okay, so, I mean, that's where we'll look at what was already allocated, how much is gonna be spent, and then look to next year. We'll work it out.
But through the management, you are working on capital, not more. It has to be presented before the end of the fiscal year.
Correct.
This is probably the next time council meeting, and that's where the capital money would come from, correct?
Well, the school already had presented a capital plan throughout the years of different projects that have been carried out through the capital plan, so it would be, how do we fund it? When we fund it is a totally different thing, but what the plan actually says of doors, roofs, this and that, that have been carried out throughout the years, and the funding mechanism is when we determine. Just because we submit a capital plan, or a six-year capital plan on May 20th for review of council or adoption, doesn't mean we funded it at that time. Last year, some of those capital plans weren't funded till June.
But, but they should still be able to come spend that money from July 1st. If it's already been allocated...
On a capital project account, they can, because it's been allocated to a capital project.
Right, so what I was saying is, why did it wait till October, I mean, November?
I will talk about offline, figure out what the financing on that was. Because typical, typically, if it's a capital project, those special revenues have carried over on the capital projects.
Right, but that money, capital money becomes available July 1st, so how are we going to...
So, I'm just gonna say right now, if I may, I was not here for last year's budget, we're here now, so we'll figure out what the timing was of how they allocated those monies and when they posted to those accounts. So, allocated and posted are two different things, so with the absence of a finance team, a lot of that stuff did not get posted in a timely manner. So, their ability to be posted into MUNIS may have been delayed, even though the town council allocated in July, the finance department or the lack of finance department did not post it into a capital account or create that capital account. So, that's when I come and I said, hey, look, with this capital, I gotta get a handle on it, we gotta figure out where money is. That's all the stuff that we've been working on, to figure out where were these capital line items, when were they allocated, are they still open, has anything been spent? I've spent a lot of time with, and we got to everything else, to say, these, all these capital counts that are out there, police station, fire, DPW, and school are all capital accounts that have been created, there were many that didn't even have a project account. So, until the finance department creates the project account, they don't have the ability to spend it. So, that's what we've been working on.
This situation's only gotten better since Jack's come on board. So, you're working to chip away at all this...
100%. Let's keep the flow...
Uh, what's that?
Let's keep the flow of the meeting where it should be. All right. All right. Any other questions? Okay, I have a couple. I think I asked this at the public hearing as well, I just wanna reiterate for anyone different watching. And I appreciate the reasoning on the added, like, the administrators or the APs and the principals, and I do agree that there is a need. I'm just wondering sort of on the district-wide level, whether there is opportunity to consolidate some of those higher positions, where we're kind of getting a sense of maybe like what those positions entail, sort of like what are the descriptions of what those positions are doing, because we don't have that level of detail, just to get an understanding of sort of like the district-wide positions and how those are functioning, if there's any overlap, if there is any opportunity for consolidating some of those higher functions.
Certainly, that could be a mini-project to write that all up, for sure. My reaction is, the assumption perhaps behind that is we have these extra positions and like, what are these people doing? There's a natural pressure on our budget because of the fact that we're at net minimum school spending, and every year, things get harder, not easier, and I've had to make reductions. And my job is specifically to get improvements, right? So, there's this natural pressure, you're not actually making improvement for me, I'm in this position to eliminate your position, right? And that's actually happened, and we, like, these tables will shift throughout a year, you'll see it constantly, we're constantly moving and adjusting because it didn't have the anticipated impact. So, my first response would be, yeah, we could certainly give some descriptions at some point or answer questions about specific positions. I value them, because if I didn't, they wouldn't exist. That's just how I think and how I work. And we need to make dramatic improvements. You know, at the high school, for example, on some of those administrators, there's traditional roles that people think of, assistant principal and principal, and then in the roles that we're asking people to do, which are different. Like, we have some school administrators, all they do is work with teachers on instruction all day long, they don't do discipline, they don't do parent calls, they're instruction folks. That's not typical, but it's proving to be productive. So, you know, I think discussion of any particular position, absolutely. I'm tasked with improvement and we're at net minimum. The other side, we're looking for teachers and we have very small classes, so by no means are we, you know, hiring administrators and saying the teachers have 40 kids in their class. We have classes as low as 10 or 11 kids in some of our programs. So, it's, and we're often tasked with calling someone administrator because of licensure, and their work is all the time in classes with teachers and kids. But again, there's this perception that people are sitting at desks, this is very true of that.
I mean, I'm well aware, because I work there, but just, I think for the residents and for people watching, it would be beneficial to get some of that detail on, you know, what are, you know, what are some of those positions that they see as administrative, but maybe they are in the classroom and they are working specifically? I think that would be a benefit to all of us here, just getting some of that information would be helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Abstentions? I mean, you too, thank you.